Will the meeting please come to order? And please take a moment for silent prayer or reflection. Okay, Teri.
Archiana Aljor?
Here.
Lisa Lamont?
Here.
Nicole Cohen? John Mastin?
Here.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to review and accept the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. Nicole Cohen? John Mastin?
Yes.
Lisa Lamont?
Yes.
Archiana Aljor?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes. Okay. Mrs. Asire.
Thank you, President Cox. Our agenda for this meeting, we have our regular first two items, and then on the recognition of visitors, we will be recognizing our nationally board certified teachers. We have three teachers who have recertified, Marsha Becker, Sarah Darnall, and Jan Esme, and we also have Pam Goddard, who has received her certification as nationally board cert. And then we have our LHC, L-H-C-E-A, excuse me, presentation. Under the consent agenda, I would like to draw the board's attention to the minutes, which are 4 dot 1 dot 1. The organizational session of January and the regular and special sessions of January are listed, and then we have all of our work sessions. And so if you wouldn't mind turning to the first work session, which is about five pages in, maybe a little bit more. It shows the work sessions for Oro Grande Elementary School. And I wanted to share with you the format of the notes. So when you turn to the page where the notes are listed, what you will see is that the top page of the attachment are the card responses. So the categories that we asked people to respond were planning, resources, pedagogy, and then if there was something that didn't seem to fit, Teri created a miscellaneous column. So the first section are all of the card responses, and then after the card responses are the actual notes that were transcribed from the note paper. And those simply go down the columns. So the note pages follow just column to column. So you just read them from left to right. Those are the pages of the notes, everything transcribed there. We did try to note when it was board comment versus staff comment, but what you have is a set of those for each school, their card responses and their notes that were taken at the meetings. Now, some of the notes may not be that clear. If you, as Teri was interpreting them and I went back and looking at them, I didn't always know what I meant either when I wrote it down, but we tried to get it as clear as possible there. So you have one of these for each of the schools' sessions for you to review. We do have later on the agenda a discussion about the curriculum committee meetings that we had, or, excuse me, work sessions that we had. Excuse me. Between now and then, I'm going to try to compile everything and do a summary report for you.
Now, I notice under the charted responses on some of these, you had in both eyes the word "simple." What was that referring to?
I'm sorry, I have what now?
Simple on some of these? Or is it sample? Was it simple? It's simple.
That was the word. Somebody wrote "simple." They said it needs to be simple.
Oh.
As in simplified?
Okay, I thought it was a new category. Okay. A simple person or the board?
No, it was when you were talking about the book and it needs to be simple, not complex.
I got it, I got it. Okay. Continue on.
All right. The next item in the consent agenda is 4 dot 1 dot 2, which is the approval of the consent calendar. Then 4 dot 1 dot 3 is the personnel report. You will notice in the personnel report that because we had our intent to returns go out, we do have some information in here of folks who are not intending to return and the attached documentation behind that. 4 dot 1 dot 4 are gifts and donations. And 4 dot 1 dot 5 are the travel requests. So one of the things I do want to share, that you will start to see more travel requests, part of that is that as we were reviewing our policy and regulation, we realized that what we were actually bringing to the board was out of state overnight. And so what our policy actually says is if it's in-state but overnight, it should come to the board. So we're getting into the habit. We've just started asking for those. We've been doing them for quite some time, but not bringing them to the board. So you will start seeing just regular overnight trips coming to the board. So that will lengthen a little bit the travel section. Any questions on that? Item 5.1 is old business. This is the second reading for approval of the retirement policies. These were updated, and there were some changes that were made by the board at the first reading, and those are highlighted in the G-C-Q-E Retirement for Professional Staff Members. Otherwise, there are no changes in these policies from the first reading. Any questions on that? The new business begins on 6.1. The first item under 6.1 is the request that the board discontinue the technology fee of $5 per student per year, beginning for the 1920 school year. And we do have some opportunity to align ourselves with statute, and because this was referred to as a technology fee, we are not and should not be charging pupils for access to technology. And so we're going to remove that fee from our, with the board's approval. Item 6.2 is a request to approve the high school auto shop purchase of a scissor rack. This is actually being purchased through our WAVE-CTED agreement and has been approved by the WAVE Board. This brings the auto shop up to date in terms of alignment technology with laser alignment technology, which is the current industry standard for their certification. Item 6.3, this is a request that the board approve a hearing officer for the next year. And we currently have our officer for 2019. This follows calendar year for the calendar year 2019 is Mrs. Becky Goldberg, and she has been willing to continue to serve as the hearing officer, and then Mr. Brad Gardner, who fills in when she is not available. We do have historically had a hearing officer because of the number of hearings and also because of the fact that if a board member, sitting board member hears them, then when, if they come to the board on appeal, then that board member would not be able to be a part of that. We have looked to increase our available hearing officers, and just for your information, we did ask Mr. Rooney if he would be interested in serving many. He said, "Not yet." So that item is coming as an annual. Item 6.4, this is the request to approve our comprehensive annual financial report, which is referred to as the CAFR for 2017-18. And basically, this is our audit report, and that was sent to the board electronically a couple of weeks ago for the board's review. If you have any questions on that, you're certainly welcome, and I will refer them to Mr. Murray. Item 6.5, this is a request for the board to begin the process for applicants for the Employee Benefit Trust. So we have our employee benefit trustees, and if you'll note at the bottom of the memo, we have two of the terms that are expiring in June of 2019. And I know at the last appointment, Mrs. Cox had inquired a little bit about the process, and we do follow our policy EIC, which we can revisit, but we wanted to make sure that there was plenty of time to put out applications, to get those submitted, and then if the board wanted the opportunity to interview candidates before making any decisions, that we would have time for that process. So this particular item is to begin the process, and then if we would like to have discussion at the board meeting about what that process looks like, we can certainly have our policy EIC available for that.
Have either of the people who, their terms are expiring, have either of them expressed an interest in continuing or not yet?
We haven't, we haven't even inquired yet, although one of, I think both of them are in the room, so.
I had thought, I had thought my term was due June of 2020, so I guess not. We had some extended discussion on that, but I thought it wasn't up until next year.
So then, does that mean that you're interested in serving again?
I was interested in going at least through June of 2020, but, but the terms are two years?
Three.
Three years. So I don't know if I can commit to three years.
Okay.
You have to talk to my boss.
Okay. Okay.
And I'll be fine too.
Okay. Okay. All right.
And we can go back and review to see what that discussion was. I don't recall, was that at this board meeting or was that at?
I thought it was at, at one of the EBT meetings.
I think yours was to take the place of someone that, you actually took the place of Mark Nixon, who resigned, and then, so you filled out the rest of his term, and he actually came back for two months to fill somebody else's or something.
I don't recall. We can look into that if you'd like. Okay. Item, excuse me, item 6.6 is the item I referred to earlier. This will be where we'll present the review of the information that has, that occurred at the curriculum work sessions and have an opportunity to discuss what the board heard and what you would like to see as a direction for going forward. Item 6.7, this is the security policy we are bringing forward. Actually, it's the regulation. There are a couple of changes on this. We had lengthy discussion about this regulation earlier on, and what we decided is, although there was direction for the board to develop some actual forms, we wanted to get the language and the policy first before we go through and develop the forms. So what we would like to do is have this policy reviewed and approved, and then we would actually be developing the forms that would go along with, which would be exhibits with this policy for the enforcement of it. We also, if you have a chance to look at the policy, updated language, but there's also the statement that has been added, "In the event of a catastrophic health and safety emergency, live video may be shared with law enforcement to ensure the safety and security of students and staff." So we would need to define that further in an exhibit. And then there was also information about those who are authorized to view video and what kinds of releases they would need to sign for that. So those would be additional exhibits as well. If you have any questions on this policy? All right. Item 6.8, this one is actually very new and quite different from what it was in the past. This is our policy on professional staff supplementary pay plans. And so we have been looking at this actually for about a year, talking about the stipends and other compensation that staff received. And so there's a couple of main, or three or four main areas of difference here. First, it hadn't been exhibit, this exhibit hadn't been updated for many years, so there were extracurricular activities that were either no longer offered or had been renamed to other things, and so the stipends did not align. The second area was the payment structure. With all of the changes that have been occurring in our salary over the last few years, the constant changes in the base salary, et cetera, it was very difficult to calculate percentages for people, and they were all over the place. There wasn't much equity in, in the stipends, depending on who they were. And then the other thing we found is that they were being miscalculated or submitted incorrectly at site staffs because they changed so frequently, people couldn't figure out. They were, like, we would increase the base salary, for example, but perhaps an assistant didn't realize that, so they were submitting a stipend calculated on two years ago base salary. So there were a lot of issues that we were finding in this process. So what we decided to do is to look at having an actual dollar amount that was static, and it would be the same for everybody who was doing that. And we looked at what we were currently paying and what other districts identified as their stipends for these same kinds of activities and developed this format. The third area that we added back and are recommending that the board approve are national board certification stipends. These were originally authorized by the board and were discontinued back when the fiscal situation became very dire for the district. And in our discussion, when our teachers decide to pursue further education, those who choose to pursue national board certification are not earning the college credits for salary benefit, whereas those who perhaps choose to pursue maybe an administrative credential so they can get salary credit, but they don't ever plan on being an administrator, so they're actually getting additional money for that work that they've done, whereas with board certification, they are not. So we are recommending that we bring back the national board certification stipend as an ongoing acknowledgement of the work that was done for those staff. And then the final area is special education. And what we have right now, we have two vacancies that have been open for over a year in special education. We also are going to have a minimum of seven special education openings for next year. We're having a terrible time trying to recruit special education teachers, and we have many teachers in our district who are actually certified to teach special education, but choose not to use that certification because of the tremendous workload that comes along with that. Our caseloads are fairly high, and it takes hours and hours to do that. So we are actually recommending that we add a $5,000 stipend on an annual basis for those who are actively teaching in a special education classroom.
So just, just so that I'm clear, we wouldn't increase their salary, we would give them a stipend?
We would give a stipend, right. The salary would be the same, but if you choose to take on that special education role with the IEP case management, all of that, then they would get a stipend for that.
And that would continue for their entire time?
For the time they're in a special education classroom, yes.
And that does not include staff that would be hired from outside of the district?
I'm sorry.
So, so for instance, if I go out and I recruit a special education teacher, now we're going to give them base pay plus the stipend?
If they're going to teach a special education class, yes. Yeah. Because the additional, and I think you could speak with many of our teachers, the number of hours spent developing IEPs, writing IEPs, sitting in IEP meetings before and after the school day, et cetera, that is the load that is particularly demanding.
I don't disagree with it in theory. I'm just, my curiosity is why wouldn't we just simply say that special education class teacher is a different level of teacher and raise the tag?
Have a differentiated salary schedule.
Correct.
Yeah. At this point, we just didn't want to go down that pathway. That's the only reason. It seemed like it was more, and we do have people who are, I don't want to go there, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's a hard-to-fill position.
And one of the things to answer your question, Mr. Mastin, is sometimes if a teacher does transfer, if it's part of their contract, it's very cumbersome. It was cleaner if they go back to the general classroom, and it's something, instead of going back in their contract, it can become an issue if they were on that contract before. We do want to also share that this practice has become pretty common amongst districts because, again, it's a demand and it's a need. It's not just something they're in Hattaway, the competition's great. I know in other areas, including Kingman, and Go Ahead, they do utilize stipends.
Kingman pays $4,000. We, the conversation also started with the fact that it was a hard-to-fill stipend to start with.
Right.
So they got a hard-to-fill stipend when they came, but then nothing for continuing. And so that was part of it as well. I'm trying to think, why did we go down that pathway to start with? And that was it. So as you flip through, you'll notice that the, beginning on page three of six, these are the listings for all of the different positions that we have currently for coaching and other kinds of activities that have stipends. And then we move into the middle school in the middle of page four, and then on page five, the elementary school stipends. There's also an opportunity that has been added where it would be 10% over the base after the third full year of service, and then an additional 10% for 20% total over the base at the sixth year substantiated service.
Can I ask a question about the stipend for the, how does that help with the workload? I mean, I know we're paying the teacher additional stipend, you know? But if the workload is so great, is there going to be any way to help that, the workload? I mean, as far as help?
It, it doesn't really help with their workload. It just compensates them for some of those extra hours. Now, we do have, and Mrs. Walter could address this, but when there's a certain number, we do provide additional assistance to staff on occasion, and she does hire staff to do certain things to take that load off, but.
Is that based on the number of children?
Number of children, and also we look at, we monitor their workload. If they're behind, they're getting things in a timely manner. We do arrange for substitutes. There's things that we do to support them for those that they reach out and are asking more, forcing that challenge.
Thank you.
So anyway, that, the regular stipends are listed, then on page six is where the national board is added back in and the special education stipend is added. So if you have any, any other questions, this was Mrs. Dagel, and Mr. Murray spent quite a bit of time going through this to try to make it fair and accurate. It doesn't say high school. Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Murray just pointed out, we lined out high school on the red part, never put it back in on the blue part, so we will add that. All right. On item 6.9, these are job description revisions as well as job title changes. Last time we had these in the consent, at the board's request, they are now coming forward to you in the action part of the agenda. And so in this particular item, we have the accounting specialist, department chairperson, and the elementary teacher classical academy. So you will note that the administrative assistant accounting is now an accounting specialist. There are several changes in that job description as well. The department chairperson, which is the fourth page in, refers to GCA dash R5. That means on the previous policy, page five is where the department chairperson's stipend is described, and this is the job description that goes with that. So there are some revisions in that department chairperson.
Superintendent Asire?
Yes.
When I read the department chairperson, which I'm going to assume is going to be traditionally a high school.
Actually, it's high school and middle school.
We're identifying appropriate certificate in the specified department area. So are we looking for a bachelor's or a master's degree in, say, an English math or science discipline for those departments, or are we simply looking for?
It's certification, so they will have a bachelor's degree in the content areas, where it may not necessarily be the case would be in CTE.
I know that policy dictates that every year, a department chair, the principal should call for those who might also be interested in that position because it's a money position. And I'm wondering if that should be, that information should be included in this job description, that maintaining the position over time is not necessarily guaranteed.
I don't know that that goes into the job description. Our policy doesn't call for it annually, I don't believe, but I think that it does call for the fact that if the principal is not planning to continue that person as the department chair, they have to give them adequate notice.
Okay.
They can call for them manually, but I don't believe that it's in our policy. I'd have to check that.
It may have changed, but I think it used to be.
I could be wrong.
It's often not followed, that it's not followed.
We do find that on occasion, like we did with travel.
Really?
So on item 610, I apologize that there are a couple of errors on the memo here, and that is my responsibility, and I missed them. So we have, in this particular one, there are actually four CTE courses, not two, that are coming forward, and one of them is not listed here on this front page. The plethora of digital communications classes are now being consolidated per legislative direction to Introduction to Digital Communications, Advanced Digital Communications Journalism, Advanced Digital Communications Publication, and then there should be a fourth one that says CTE Internship Digital Communications. So that was missing in the cover memo. However, those four descriptions do follow after the deleted course descriptions, and so you will see that these have been condensed. Also, this is moving from a three-year to a two-year CTE program. Any questions on those? And you may recall, we just brought to you last session the CTE Digital Communications for the honors. All right. Item 6.11 is a request to contract with therapy as staffing for our teletherapy with a speech therapist for the 18, 19 school year. The board may recall that we had a speech therapist that was unable to complete the final certification, and so that person has transferred to a regular classroom setting, and we do need to provide speech therapy, but also because the person was unable to keep the certification, we have to go back and provide services for, what's the name of it? Thank you. Compensatory services for those students, even though they were getting service, because she's not certified, they have to get service from a certified therapist. And so we need to provide that compensatory service as well as ongoing service. We have been unable to recruit a full-time person, and so the teletherapy is the next best option for us.
On, on that recruitment piece, because I'm always, as you know, Mrs. Walter, I'm always more of a fan of a staff member than a contract. Is it a matter of compensation that we haven't been able to recruit or a lack of available people?
It's been lack of availability this year, and we've been in challenges recruiting an in-person contracted provider, because we're going to the teletherapy because we haven't been able to get an, even an onsite contracted. The good news is we are currently in communications with an individual who is licensed as a speech pathologist working in Phoenix that's building a house here in Hattaway, so we are hopeful for the next year.
And what, what do the compensatory services cost the district in this case?
The services will depend. We'll do our best to try to make up the time within the schedule with our existing staff between now and end of the year. We generally will be providing probably a couple weeks of services during the summer, so we will be at the hourly rate. If we were providing them during the summer, we'll be using our existing staff, so we'll be a little bit less money hourly comparison to the contracted services. And we do have staff who are willing to do that if they're needing to do that in the month of June, so we do have a plan if we're necessary to do that.
For this contract, we're asking not to exceed $35,000?
Right, right. But, but there's always, I mean, we've had a person in place, and now we have to go and we have to roll back and redeliver a portion of those services, and there's a, there's a cost to that. So I was just kind of curious as to how we were going to absorb that.
Well, like I said, based on the schedule and the things that we do, not that there's a lot of extra time in their day, but we do try to schedule services so we have the ability to do some of that make up time during a given year if the therapist may be sick. So we are looking to maximize the time that we have between now and end of the year, so to utilize the time that we do have, but it'll probably end up costing about $15,000 during the summer if we're not able to make up that time.
Thank you.
And those services at that time will be paid through our Medicaid month if we have to go into that.
All right. Item 6.12 is a request to approve the jumpstart national standards for K-12 personal finance education. We do have and have had for some time a math of money course at our high school. It's a fourth-year math course, and there are not state standards for that course. Right now, it focuses primarily on algebra standards and skills, but the, the long-term benefit for students would be to actually focus on the. for students would be to actually focus on the effective use of money and learn how to manage their finances. It's interesting, right now, there's legislation coming forward about personal finance as well, and it seems to be an area of concern statewide and nationwide. And so the goal would be for our Math of Money teacher to incorporate these standards and then develop some units of study that would go along with them to focus on personal finance within that Math of Money course.
As a parent of teenagers, my comment is it's sorely needed.
So this is only, will only be curriculum, I mean, standards, but no curriculum? So it's, there's no cost to us?
That is correct. So I can't say that there will never be another recommendation for any text, but right now, it's to adopt the standards so that we can develop the curriculum around those.
Okay.
Yeah. And those were sent to the board electronically. And then the final item, 6.13, is the vouchers, activity funds, and auxiliary funds. If you have any questions on that documentation.
Do you mind if I jump back? I wasn't quick enough when we were reviewing some of the other items. 6.1, I was curious, with the technology fee, are we planning to still charge that, but change it under a different name, or just no fee at all?
No fee at all.
Okay. And then 6.3, the hearing officer, it's provided by Medicaid, is that correct? Yeah, Medicaid? It's funded from Medicaid?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. So if we were to bring onboard an additional hearing officer, would that also be funded by Medicaid? Or is there a cap?
That would be a discussion. We'd have to look at the cost of that to see if we could sustain it on that existing funding. We've been able to sustain that.
So do we pay per hearing, or we just pay a stipend to that individual?
She paid per hour, in some will time, per hearing.
So the same number of hearings would be split between two officers, so more than likely, that would be, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Or three, whatever.
Thank you.
There's some level of consistency in having one, but there's also a lot of a commitment. In the information section, excuse me, we do have a report from personnel and also special services on some of the things that have been happening. Personnel includes technology, and that is the end of the written reports that are in this one. Any other questions?
Is that it?
What's up?
Is that it?
That's the agenda. Unless you have other questions on the agenda, that would be it. We do have our board work session tomorrow, our retreat, so we have a lot of information for that.
Okay. Does, do any board members have anything that you would like to add? Okay, I would like to remind you that at the high school right now, there's an open house for the CTE programs that you can go to, and also at Chili's is the K-12 fundraiser that I happen to have a flyer, but you can probably just tell them when you go in that you are, you're there for that purpose. And that goes on until 10 o'clock at Chili's tonight, so I encourage you to partake. Anything else?
What's up?
How about that? It's pretty good. All right. You've got time to go to the CTE open house and Chili's now. Okay, then.
Terry, for a point of information, is the CTE open house posted?
No, it's not. Only first of that, let me know if they will come in with Mrs. Cox.
So we can have no more than two board members at the CTE open house?
But if you're the only other one going, that would be okay?
I've been the past two years, so I'm fairly familiar with the programs.
Yeah, but I'm saying, the two of you aren't going, I'm assuming Nicole's not going because she's not here. So John, if you decided to go, you certainly could, right, Mrs. Fleming? Okay.
And I actually thought there were two separate events, so I am going, I thought there was just a regular kind of open house. I have a rising ninth grader, so I was planning to go to that, but.
Okay, so you will be there?
Yes. I can stay out of the CTE section of.
Okay. Just to be like that.
Okay.
Okay, let's decide now. So you're going to the high school, and Mr. Mason, what shall you do?
I will be going home because I have a fifth grader that I have to proctor this evening.
Okay. All right, then. Okay, then, may I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Seconded.
Mrs. Fleming?
Lisa Rollon?
Yes.
John Mason?
Yes.
Or Cheyenne Oliver?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned.